If there are no objections from the board, I would like to move the discussion to after the board's record to the administration. Please don't judge that. Okay. And by way of announcement, the ACLU High School PTSO in conjunction with Catholic and the sponsoring of SAT ACT Combo Practice Test on Saturday, February 18th. And this $10 donation collected door and the rest of that test. Cattest.com. I'm sure there's more information if that's available at Reynolds, as well as the central office here. So we're going to move on to public comment. Would anyone sign up for public comment?
Where shall I be? How about with page one, question number one?
How many do we have signed up?
Five pages. We have five. You're okay, you're fine. There are five pages. There are approximately about 25-ish?
Twenty-five-ish. Folks, I would like you to help us out. Get three minutes. If you can make it shorter, we'd appreciate it. We have something new tonight, but we're going to have the timer up on the screens in here, so you don't have to trust me, it'll be up on the screen. And I would like to ask the audience to be respectful of any comments that are made. And so first, we have...
And my apologies if I mispronounce you, please do not hesitate to correct your name from board and for the record. Kathy Rodarmer?
And Ms. Rodarmer, you may have to give us just one second. Beattie, come on up. Beattie, come on up to the stand. And if you wouldn't mind, before you start, please state your name and your address, if you wouldn't mind.
My name is Kathy Rodarmer, McCann, North Carolina.
Just one second.
Okay.
And since we did have so many folks signed up, I'm going to have to stop everyone right at three minutes.
Okay, I just want to give a historical perspective on the recent decision about the school board and handing out novels. We stand on giant shoulders. We have at the beginning of our history, the Black Ruth Regiment, which had many ministers going out and fighting for the revolution to give us our freedoms. The Declaration of Independence says where and how our creative certain unable rights. So what is the Creator but God? And to allow the book, of which so many of our laws are predicated upon, and so many factual and historical foundations, civil institutions of this country are built upon, does not infringe anyone else's religious rights. Refusing to accept the ultimate authority of our rights of liberty, freedom, is cutting off all ties with our heritage and laws, and leaves us rootless and drifting, ready to latch on to any and every fact that might come along, and leaves us ultimately the ultimate authority of our rights to man and his fallen wicked whims. Every society, every nation is undergirded by some religion or philosophy. Ours happens to be the Jude and Jude Christian one. Christianity is the heart of Western civilization, is in fact, and is in fact its moral code. It has formed who we are as Americans from the time of our founding till today, though some are trying to diminish that influence to the detriment of this nation. For how can we continue to be the nation of our founding if we continue to form one of the foundational elements that blessed and helped make this nation great? Like it or not, it has informed those who reject the Christian faith. As an example of that influence, we have the many schools founded by Christian denominations. We have Dartmouth College, Brown University Princeton, William &amp; Mary, Georgetown College, Harvard. All of these were established as Christian institutions. We could even teach, can we even teach this history today without knowing from where these Christian educational founders found their inspiration? With the actions of this school board recently, I think not. You cannot be neutral on this issue without denying welcome to children the right to know about their own heritage and influence of the Christian religion on the institutions. And it's called history, folks. Alexis de Tocqueville, whose prints through his respective Democracy in America published in 1835, divided a virtual roadmap of the future direction of the young nation he observed that the United States, in the spirit of religion and the spirit of freedom, were ultimately united in that they reigned in common, won the same country. Americans, he added, viewed religion as indispensable to the maintenance of the republic institution because it facilitated free institutions. People who are ashamed of their own culture will not defend it. I am not ashamed of my Christian heritage or the heritage of the nation. It is one of the founding elements that helped make us the nation that we are. You cannot teach, you cannot deny the teaching of the Christian heritage in this nation without denying children their right. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rodarmer.
Matt Kean, fourth one.
I didn't realize I'd gotten here that early to be number two. I want to thank you for allowing us to talk about this today. Really, I think the biggest thing that I'm concerned about is the freedom to be able to express our religion, the freedom to embrace it, the freedom to share it that we're granted under the First Amendment. And I'm grateful for the Gideons passing out the Bibles. They did it the right way, putting it on the table, just letting them know that the Bibles were there, and I'm grateful for that. But I think it's also important that, as religious freedom, my big deal is, and I appreciate what our lady said just a moment ago, it is a Christian heritage that we enjoy here. But I'm also concerned for the freedom of religion, all religions. And I will be just as happy as a Christian for the Gideons to do what they're doing. I'll be just as happy for the Wiccans to pass out their materials on a table the same way where kids can come up if they want to, to get the materials. Or if another religion comes, and the Muslims, if they want to do it the same way. I think that's fair, it's equitable, it's not crammed down anybody's throat. And what it does, it allows us to practice this great freedom that we have of religious freedom, and the practice of sharing it, and the practice of talking about it. It allows it to be done equally openly for all folks. And I'm not asking that just Christians be allowed to give materials out of the schools. But I am asking that all faiths have the same right and the same opportunity, and that we are not discriminated because we are Christian, or not discriminated because of the religion. Let it be open, let it be voluntary, and let it be for all folks. That way, it's for everybody. And I think that that will be fair, it'll be equitable, it'll be right. You guys have a tough job, and you've got a lot of folks, and we all come from different places, different faiths. I love my faith, I vehemently love to proclaim my faith, but on the same token, I want to guard the freedom of anybody else that wants to do the same thing, and especially in the public school. And I thank you for the opportunity to address it.
I'm sorry, what was the, what was your name again?
Pat Hand.
P J M D?
Yep.
Mr. Hand, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you speaking. Would you call the next two names out, and maybe the next two folks can come up, until we'll be ready immediately after.
Karen Bird from Stockton, Bridge, New York. And Byron Ballard from the...
Hi, I'm Karen Bird. And I can tell you a lot about me as far as taxpayers' citizens and such, but what I really am tonight is just a mama. I'm just a mama. And what mothers do is love their children, and all children. In saying that, what we've seen of our kids in the media recently is standing for their own rights, be it standing for their coach, be it praying at the pole, most recently, a petition that a little boy got from his parents and wanted to take it to school. And he did, and he got 92 signatures. And I thought, well, I'm not going to let them just stand on their own, I'll give a voice also. So the voice I give tonight is asking that you provide training for teachers and principals in the realm of religious rights. Not to say parents aren't the ones to do that, they are. But if the parents have taught their children at home, then the children really respect their teacher in the classroom, and they believe what the teacher says. So if we give that training to teachers and principals, and they know what is legally correct, then they'll pass that along in the classroom. Now, I have some folders for each of you that list a place that does offer training in this realm. They don't only offer it for teachers and principals, they will also do an evening training for parents. So that puts our parents, our teachers, our principals, our educators, all on the same page. They all know what to teach. But it strengthens the role, that we're trying to strengthen anyway, of teamwork for teaching our kids. So I would just beg you to take a look at these folders and the information in it, and consider offering hands-on physical workshops for, not an email, not a memo, an actual workshop where they actually learn. Thank you.
Ms. Bird?
Yes.
I will make sure every member gets one of those.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm here representing the Mountain Area Interfaith Forum, as well as Mother Grove Temple. And the first thing I want to do is thank all of you all for drafting this policy. It is clear, it is fair. We have some questions, but I especially want to draw attention to several places I really like. The Buncombe County Schools will neither advance nor inhibit any religion or religious belief, viewpoint, or practice. You will supply continuous professional development for administration and staff members, something I think is most necessary. School officials and employees, while acting in their official capacities, shall not use their positions to endorse, promote, or disparage a particular religious belief, viewpoint, or practice. And that if there are questions that are raised about a specific action, whether it might violate the Establishment or Free Exercise Clauses, or the Free Speech Clause of the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, you've got a chain of command that question goes up to. Ms. Parker spoke earlier of the one-room schoolhouse, and how we face a different world than our grandparents did. I was at Anka High School in the old building, which gives you an idea of how long ago that was. And in Anka High School, we never talked about religion, because most everybody there was a Protestant Christian, usually a Baptist, or a Methodist, or they were unchurched, as my family was. But this is a new day, with a wider cultural diversity in our county. All the children in Buncombe County Schools deserve the same consideration and sense of safety regardless of their or their family's spirituality. I believe this new policy goes a long way, and is in fact a good, strong step in achieving that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard.
Senator Whitmire, Megan Fisher.
Ms. Blount, that was, the first names again?
This is Timothy Whitmire and Megan Fisher.
Good evening. I'm Megan Fisher.
And I'm Timothy Whitmire.
As students at North Windy Ridge, we realize that the First Amendment was written so that we can have freedom of religion, not freedom from it. Isaiah 6:8 says that, "Here am I, send me."
Please don't take our rights away, us Christians, just to be tolerant of the small group of people in the North Buncombe District. Things were going just fine at our school, please don't change it. Thank you, and God bless our schools.
The next two names again?
Rusty Smart, followed by Sandra Blackwell, then Daniel Reed.
Rusty Smart, Barnardsville, North Carolina. Did North Windy Ridge break the law by allowing the Gideons to drop off the Bibles? No. Did North Windy Ridge break the law by making the Bibles available? No. So why are we discussing this issue? I find it interesting that out of thousands of residents who have supported our schools, school administration, and students, we have one parent who makes a complaint, and we end up where we are today. A parent that has disrespected school staff and volunteers, belittled school administration, and drug the name of Buncombe County Schools through the media mud. And now we are here creating a new policy regarding religious materials in schools. However, it must be across the board, and all schools must adhere the same way, which leaves us with words to draw the line. Do we include it all, or do we exclude it all? Well, I'm open to being totally exclusive, but in order for us to be totally exclusive, we once removed evolution, which is Scientology, from our textbooks. You say, responding by, the state says that. Well, the state also says that we can have Gideon Bibles and other religious material dropped off at school. Where's the line? Library books will need to be reviewed for content and referred to religion and religious practices, and be removed. Where's the line? I'm also open to being totally inclusive, as long as materials to be distributed are reviewed and meet standards that are appropriate for our children. Policies must also be set to keep constant distribution from hindering educational processes. We do not need someone different dropping off materials every other day for distribution. Again, many lines to define. There are no laws broken. Instead of making this parent and ACLU aware of no laws were broken, we are here tonight. Our school systems in North Carolina are already struggling financially. As part of the new process, the school board is paying a lawyer, somewhere around $170 an hour, who does not specialize in First Amendment rights, to tell us what the policy should be. The ACLJ, and I'm sure the ACLU, who specializes in the First Amendment, has offered to help. Why would we, as a school board, not take them up on this offer as a way to save our educational dollars? I ask, how is it that one parent, and I'm quoting here, that says the school board has finally been scared by the ACLU to do something, says she wants the system punished for the issue, she would like to smack school officials, and referred to North Windy Ridge as idiots who started to bully them? Someone with no respect for our faith, schools, teachers, volunteers, and administration be allowed to call the shots? This is causing us to take time and funding away from our children, and that is a shame.
Sandra Blackwell, from the Jupiter area. As I have been following the recent controversy, I have found many adults who are modeling inappropriate behavior before our children. Adults who have high expectations of other behaviors, of others' behaviors, yet cannot meet those standards themselves. It makes me realize how much more we need good mentors and role models to help counteract this misfortune. People who will be present in their lives to help motivate, encourage, and provoke them on to loving good works. People with morals, character, and integrity who will stand up for and beside our children. People like a football chaplain who is willing to give up their time to volunteer, not just show up at a practice or a game. But to be there for each child on that team that may need something as simple as a friend. The news of this person being removed from this position has already been posted on the internet on multiple occasions with much gratification by the poster. I do hope these postings are incorrect, and that one parent in this school system is not allowed by administration to cause that much damage to our children. If anything, we need a person like Rusty Smart volunteering for each and every school team we have. As a parent, I too found myself in a position of fighting for her child's rights this year, yet I handled the matter without defaming or bullying the school system into creating and/or changing any policies, or without trying to drive out any other group of people. What I find in the current situation is bullying by one parent who makes threats, like a child uses unfounded threats of DSS against her parents. If you buckle under the threat, you will find yourself subject to that child instead of being the authority. As a school board, you have the responsibility of many, not just one. Use this opportunity wisely, so that one parent cannot cause us to waste our time, our energy, and our money anymore. And for the record, what others may be able to do is impossible for a Christian. We cannot check our faith at the door like a coat. God, through the life of Jesus Christ, that was sacrificed for our sins, that we might have life, and through the gift of the Holy Spirit lives in us. Our faith is ingrained in us like the rings in an oak tree, and it is impossible to leave part of ourselves outside whether we are going to the schoolhouse or the steakhouse. The awesomeness of God's love for us is so great that we must share it, whether it's through our own words or the words on a shirt.
Amen.
Daniel Reed, followed by Chad Nesta, Roy McTheer.
Chad, I'm going to pass.
You're going to pass? Okay. Chad?
Hello, I'm Chad Nesta. I'm the former chairman of Buncombe County Republican Party. I'm the current chairman of the Carolina Stompers. We have over 1,000 members just here in Buncombe County alone, and over 5,000 members statewide. And I've got, kind of got a personal dig in this, because my daughter is the North Carolina State Champion Cheerleader at Irwin High School, and she means everything to me. So with that said, in regards to policy, 652, section titled Religion in School Activities, it says, "As required by law, school officials, employees, and volunteers, while acting in their official capacities, shall not use their official positions to endorse, promote, or disparage a particular religious belief, viewpoint, or practice." We would like to know, as Carolina Stompers, we would like to know what law you are referring to, because North Carolina Muslim teachers and staff are free to wear headscarves and turbans on their heads and pray to Allah during school hours. So why, so why is the school administration trying to tell a Christian coach he can't wear a Jesus t-shirt, or a volunteer Christian chaplain, he can't pray for the safety of the teams in the ballgame? The school traditions, and listen to this word traditions, because I'm going to give you a solution, how to beat this thing. The school traditions of a prayer before a ballgame, a school Christmas play, or a school Christmas break, not a holiday break, is just that, it's a school tradition. Just as the traditions of the American Indian are protected by the federal government, so are the traditions of the American schools. And here is the proof, the proof and the court cases. The ACLU targeted the Baldwin City School Board in Kansas. The ACLU filed suit because Santa Claus visited one of the city schools. The Baldwin City School Board fought back, and they won. They won because it was a tradition at the school. Here's some more. The Benton, Louisiana, in Benton, Louisiana, in Tifton, Iowa, and in Cranston, Rhode Island, ACLU filed lawsuits objecting to Christmas displays at schools. On each case, the ACLU lost. Why did they lose? Because it was a school tradition to put them there. So how does the ACLU seem like they win court cases all the time when you see it in the news media? In most cases, they don't. It's just not reported. Progressives in the ACLU only win school boards, only win when school boards are intimidated by the expense of lawsuits thus destroying school traditions and trampling our constitutional rights. The First Amendment clearly provides that Congress can make no law respecting an establishment of religion. But the one that everybody forgets is, nor interfere with the free exercise thereof.
Thank you, Mr. Nesta. Three minutes? It's like a monkey game.
Roy McTheer, followed by Marvin Merz, and Michelle Hammond.
Roy McTheer is the pastor, Cedar Hill, Eastern Baptist Church. Andrew Jackson, there, seventh president, said the Bible is the rock upon which the republic rests. America was founded upon biblical principles. So many in America and Buncombe County have forgotten their biblical roots. But it was Bible-believing Christians who formed our nation's government. Some secular groups have dedicated themselves to rewriting American history, stamping out God, the Bible, Jesus Christ, and anything pertaining to Christianity. One of the reasons their forefathers came to this great land was to be able to worship God according to the dictates of their own heart. They had no idea that all these foreign religions would be here today. The America and the school system I grew up in, the Gideons passed out Bibles in the fifth grade, we all memorized Scripture, and no one complained. I have a godly heritage and a thankful heart. According to the Holy Scriptures, we were all born sinners, and we all need a Savior. And the only Savior is the Lord Jesus Christ. According to the Scriptures, we all will stand before God one day, and we will give an account. The Bible says, "For God so loved the world, that He gave His only-begotten Son, that whosoever believeth in Him should not perish but have everlasting life." His disciples were wondering how they could go to heaven, how they would know the way. Jesus said this, "I am the way, the truth, and life, and no man cometh unto the Father but by Me all these religions." Yet there's still one way to heaven, and that's through the Lord Jesus Christ. I want to close with this in saying, I was at a meeting several years ago, the meeting included the sheriff of Buncombe County, local pastors. The meeting was about Satan worship in this area. One lady there gave her personal testimony of how she got involved in Satan worship. She got involved in Satan worship by checking out a book from the library on the occult. She said there was so much drawing power in that book, she eventually ended up Satan worshiping. She said she had a godly grandmother who didn't give up on her, kept praying. She said God saved her soul and delivered her from the power of the devil. In closing, I would like to ask you, who are in a position of authority, please make sure no book of this sort is in our school libraries. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marvin Mercer, live in the Alexander area. I have children at the North Buncombe District, at Windy Ridge, and at North Buncombe Middle School. And I'm sure you're going to hear a lot tonight about the biblical side of this, as we just heard. I'm looking at the policy, it's self-engineering, I'm more of a, I'm a very strong Christian, but I'm also a very straightforward, starting at the top. Okay? And I disagree with earlier, I think it's Ms. Ballard, this is not a good first step, this particular policy, in my opinion. Starting at the top, evolving case law. Case law is not the law. One court decides it, it goes to the next court, they disagree with it, it goes to the next court, they agree with the first one, it goes on up till it gets to the Supreme Court of the United States, if it goes far enough. Okay? If this one says, this is the way it is, then you follow that, and the next one says, no, it isn't, you're stuck. Okay? And you're spending money on attorneys. That's my opinion. Second of all, we've got two different parts here. First of all, we're saying that students, employees can engage in expression of personal religious views or beliefs. Just below that, it says, "School officials, employees, and volunteers, while acting in their official capacities, shall not use their positions to endorse, promote, or disparage a particular religious belief, viewpoint, or practice." I agree with that. I do not want anybody telling my kid that.
If you're telling them that they have to, then you're making it for them. It is a personal decision. All we're saying is, let them make a decision. Don't take it away from them so that they don't know that they have a decision. Okay? Now, another part of this is, and Mr. Hand actually said this, I'm going to run out of time here, two things. First of all, it seems to me that the principal didn't do anything wrong. If she did do something wrong, I think she went to the butterball and said, Giddians want to come in, they're a headed organization, we want to put the Bibles out, she wanted to pick up the Bibles, this is what happened. If she did do something wrong, discipline her. If she didn't do anything wrong, why are we talking about this? Why are we making a policy, and they already followed the very block in the policy here that she had? She did exactly what this whole paragraph here says. Let her do her job, and let the parents, when the book comes home, be the parents.
Amen.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Hammond, I live in Weaverville. This issue breathes about a lot of emotion, as you can tell. But I come to you tonight as a parent, and as a teacher, and as a concerned citizen of Bunkham County with regard to the religion and the schools issues that's being spoken about tonight. But I really come to you with concerns about the lack of practical knowledge and training available to our teachers and students, administrators too, as well as parents, about what is legal, what is right, and what's appropriate for the public school classroom. Right now, many teachers and administrators are fearful when it comes to religion. Many students are as well. They're not sure what they're allowed to say. Many teachers don't understand what they can include in their lessons, and there's a culture of fear in our classrooms, especially with regard to Christianity. For example, teachers plan the lessons about Christmas, we'll talk about Hanukkah and Kwanzaa and the beliefs associated with these holidays, but when it comes to Christmas and what Christians believe about Christmas and the birth of Jesus, they might talk about Santa Claus, but teachers become fearful when they start talking about Christian beliefs, even though it would be academically appropriate to include that in the classroom. Some schools have gone so far as to remove the word Christmas from the school environment, substituting instead the word winter, winter holidays, winter parties, winter celebrations. But in reality, that is not only not religiously neutral, that's favoring pagan religions.
Amen.
The examples are true for discussing the Christian historicity of other holidays as well. It's unfair to our teachers that they don't understand what is legal and what is right. Teachers feel free to discuss the religions of the world. They'll talk about Buddhism, Hinduism, Taoism, Islam, but when the topic of Christianity comes up, and the name of Jesus Christ, and what Christians believe about Jesus, teachers become fearful. None of us want our kids to go into a classroom where it is a place of fear. We want our classrooms to be a place of freedom, freedom to learn, freedom to gain new ideas, freedom to understand new things. We don't want to propagate a culture of religious fear, but a culture of religious freedom. So really, the issue is training. You have policy, not have policy. But training is not just an email or a principal's meeting. It has to be available to the teachers. In the folders that you received earlier from Ms. Byrd, there's information about training. And the training provides specific examples to teachers about what they can include in their classrooms, what's legally appropriate, and what will provide them opportunities to talk about the historically and culturally relevant ideas that are appropriate for the education environment. And the training provided helps the teachers do that with integrity and professionalism. And I think it's extremely important that teachers know what they are allowed to do, not just what they're not allowed to do. Thank you for giving this consideration.
William Evans, followed by James Conder and Donnie Freeman.
Thank you for your time and your attention. The reason I'm here, speaking, going through this nerve-wracking event, is because I love each and every one of our kids. We might not agree on things, we might not agree on policies, or stances, or religious beliefs, but a true Christian loves every single one, because we all have an eternal soul. And my earnest heart's desire is that none of us be eternally separated from our Creator, our Savior, Jesus Christ. I am Will Evans. I live in Weaverville. I've been in the school district my whole life, except for when I went to college in Nashville. I'm a former student of Bunkham High School. I am a Christian. I was saved in fifth grade after a visit from the Giddians. I wasn't led to Christ at school, I wasn't forced to make any decisions, I was simply given a Bible and a few verses. I was saved at church, that's fine. They did nothing wrong, the school administration did nothing wrong by allowing me to be given a Bible. I'm also a husband. I've been married for six years to my wonderful wife. I'm a father of two, so far, three-year-old and a one-year-old. My wife grew up in upstate New York, where progress, if you want to call it such, is taking over schools, and they were homeschooled. And when I grew up in school, homeschooled, and was for, in my opinion, everything that I knew about it was for people that couldn't be kept in school because of discipline issues. The same with Christian schools. That's what I saw when I was in school, anybody that was homeschooled, anybody that I knew that hadn't sent to the Christian schools because they couldn't stay in public school. As for my three and one-year-old and any other children that we have, if this is going to be the policy of disallowing, get instantly Bibles, people to wear Christian T-shirts, they will not be in public school. And I know many other Christians that for those reasons will withdraw their children, will stop sending their kids to public school. That's not good for the public school system, that's not good for the administrators, the teachers. I'm also a business owner. This is my uniform. Those of you that can't see, there are three crosses, that's our business logo. It's not just there to draw Christians in, it's there because we try to live our life as Christians, try to stand up to that example that's been given to us from none other than the Bible.
I'm James Nelson, Honorable Baptist Preacher, needs two names to hide behind. Times for Lighthouse Baptist Church. I'm here tonight just to ask, I know the policy we've looked at, 652, we're well aware that it's time, and we'll be drafting some kind of policy. And what we're here tonight, just from the experience we have as pastors, working with you for a long time, we've done a Bible camp now for over 24 years, and we know the power of the Bible. And I also grew up here in Bunkham County, attended North Bunkham and TC Robinson High School, and also received the Gideon Bible when I was in school. And we've got to realize today that the power of God's Word, and we need in this policy that you're going to draft somewhere or another, you need to make sure that the Giddians will always have an opportunity to come and give or make Bibles available to students. Because here's the reason, lots of parents or guardians of their students, they don't have Bibles, they won't go out and buy a Bible. But a child carrying home a Gideon Bible very likely could expose it to their parents, and there they'll find truth. And truth, if we look at that, that history would show us that many people whose children have carried Bibles home, dads and moms have got to read the Bible, and God has spoke to them, they've got to say, that has changed the way they live. We've seen a lot of it. Parents have been on drugs, alcohol, child abuse, and all this stuff can be changed because of the power of God's Word. And that's what we don't need to do today, is to take away anything, truth, away from our children. We need to make sure they have truth. And that's why we as adults and leaders, we do not want to ban the book, or even clothing that could point someone to Jesus Christ, who in turn can change that person for who they are. And we can stop a lot of child abuse. God's Word can do that. The power of Jesus Christ can change that person. And we are the pastor, a law that advocates our children to share their faith in school in a loving manner, under the leadership of the Holy Spirit. We teach our children at Bible camp, not to be ashamed of your Bible. And I know today, this 652 does not hinder the children from having a Bible at school by no means, but we as adults also need to stand up and say it's okay for the Giddians to come in. So when you're going to draft something, this school board here, and time will be changed. Our superintendent, over time, will be changed. But so when you draft something here in the next course of a few months, whatever, the policy will always be in place. So I believe that you need to make sure the policy would include that the God's Word, the Bible, will always be made available at our schools. We want to thank you very much for the job you do. And tonight, I ask you to consider what you're about to draft and make policy, because that will be hard to change in years to come. Thank you very much.
Donnie Freeman, 39, Nashua, Holliday, Weaverville, North Carolina. "For I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, for it is the power of God in salvation to everyone that believes, to the Jew first and also to the green. For therein is righteousness of God revealed, from faith to faith, as is written, the judgment lived by faith. For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all in godliness and righteousness of men, who hold the truth in righteousness. Because that which was made known of God is manifest in men, for God has shown it in them. For the invisible things of him from the creation of the world are clearly seen, being understood by the things that are made, even his eternal power and godhead, so that they are without excuse. Because when they knew God, they glorified him not as God. Neither were they thankful, but became vain in their own imaginations, and their foolish hearts were darkened, professing themselves to be wise, they became fools. And changed the glory of an uncorruptible God into an image made like unto corruptible man, unto birds, unto four-footed beasts, unto creeping things. Wherefore God also gave them unto uncleanness, through the lust of their own hearts, to dishonor of their own bodies between themselves, who changed the truth of God into a life, and worshiped and served the creature more than the Creator, who is blessed forever." Amen. If I were a pagan, that would burn me up. That truth would burn me up. But listen, that's not the end of the story. The good news, the good news of the gospel is it's not the end there. I didn't come here not to argue nobody. I came here not because I have a broken heart, because that's not the end of the story. And so often, you think it ends there. That's not the end. Listen to this. "For all have sinned and come sore of the glory of God." That sin of paganism, that sin of choosing to follow any other God, is no worse than my sin. It's no worse than my sin. My sin was just as bad, and I had to get forgiveness for it too. It's no worse, it's no worse. And the Bible says, "For the wages of that sin is death," not just physical death, but eternal death, not spiritual, but spiritual, the separation from God. But listen, but the gift of God is eternal life, through Christ is our Lord. For God sent not His Son into this world to condemn it, but the world through Him might be saved. Listen, listen, if you only confess with your mouth that Jesus Christ is Lord and believe in your heart, you can be saved. I might never speak to you again, but I want you to know that I love you, and I pray for you, and I pray for your family, and you are not my enemy, as long as we both are breathing, every one of you. And I hope to see you returning.
Amen. Donnie Freeman. Harold Rash, followed by Mike Thomas and H.D. Scoggins.
Thank you. I'm Harold Rash, U-Pastor, Cedar Hill Missionary Baptist Church. And this is a current law from Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, Lewis L. Powell Jr. Courthouse, Richmond, Virginia. The states that make up the Fourth Circuit are Maryland, South Carolina, Virginia, West Virginia, and North Carolina is there as well. It's the Peak Bus versus Upshere County, West Virginia Board of Education, 155 L. 3D 274. Although other jurisdictions may have different decisions on the matter, this case has not been overruled and is controlling law in the fourth district, which includes North Carolina. Movement schools permit other organizations to come on the campus to distribute information. Giddians must be given the same right. Schools usually make the material available in a hallway where schools must make a positive effort, or students must make a positive effort to pick up the materials. Distribution is also generally done before or after school, rather than during school hours. The court also stated that Upshere schools could not have open, could not have open the form to outside secular groups without extending the same right to religious groups such as the Giddians. The school could encounter constitutional difficulties if they refused to distribute religious materials that were similar to informational announcements by the Scouts, Forests, or the Little League. We are not persuaded that the differences between books, on one hand, and tablets on the other, is of constitutional moment. It's seen clear that schools would open themselves up to legal challenges they could not win if they determined to craft some type of language that would permit some types of outside speech by this incriminating, unconstitutional against other types. It is our considered legal opinion, based on the above citations from the decision on the Fourth Circuit in the Peak case, that a public school must either close its schools entirely to all outsiders, include the Girl Scouts and Little League, or else continue to open the form to all groups, including the Giddians. Finally, I want to stress one other citation from the opinion of Judge Mox. The judge quite correctly pointed out that the Supreme Court saw fit in the case of Abbotin County Schools versus Schim, 374 of U.S. 203, to emphasize the educational value of students of having access to the Bible. Judge Mox, quote from Snip, and this is Fourth Circuit Judge Diane Grivin-Mox. She was appointed by President Bill Clinton.
Mr. Rash, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Mike Thomas, and I'm a pastor of Mount Devon Freeway Baptist Church in Weaverville. Schools do more than train their children's minds, they also help nurture their souls by reinforcing the values they learn at home and in their communities. I believe that one of the best ways we can help our schools do this is by supporting students' rights to voluntarily practice their religious beliefs in schools. For more than 200 years, the First Amendment has protected our religious freedom and allowed many faiths to flourish in our homes, our workplace, and in our schools. Clearly understood and sensibly applied, it works. The words of President Bill Clinton. Bill Clinton directed the Secretary of Education to forward these guides to every superintendent in the United States. Every school board has these in place. What it does is it includes, but it's not limited to, student prayer, religious discussion, graduation prayer, and baccalaureate services, teaching about religion, student assignments, religious literature, teaching values, and student dress. The Equal Access Act is designed to ensure that, consistent with the First Amendment, students' religious activities are accorded the same access to public facilities as students' secular activities. My two boys graduated from Bunkham County Schools. We've lived in North Bunkham for 33 years. I'm only one of more than 25 local pastors who could be here tonight, who chose not to be, to have one voice, speak, and representation. Meetings have taken place, others will take place, much larger in Bunkham County. The decision made here tonight is not about North Bunkham and Wendy Ridge, it is about the entire school system. You have a very difficult challenge before you, but you have guidelines before you. We recently contacted the Christian Law Association concerning these issues. It's already been mentioned, I won't read it, the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals has already... teaching about religion, student assignments, religious literature, teaching values, and student dress. The Equal Access Act is designed to ensure that, consistent with the First Amendment, students' religious activities are accorded the same access to public facilities as students' secular activities. My two boys graduated from Bunkham County Schools. We've lived in North Bunkham for 33 years. I'm only one of more than 25 local pastors who could be here tonight, who chose not to be to have one voice, speak, and representation. Meetings have taken place. Others will take place, much larger in Bunkham County. The decision made here tonight is not about North Bunkham and Wendy Ridge. It is about the entire school system. You have a very difficult challenge before you, but you have guidelines before you. We recently contacted the Christian Law Association concerning these issues. It's already been mentioned, I won't read it. The Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals has already established, and I did check with them yesterday, they are still in force. Regarding the attachments of religious guidelines, issued in 1998, these have not been reissued or retracted and can still be found on the U.S. Department of Education's website. New guidelines on the constitutionality protecting prayer and bullying have been issued as well. But these do not negate or replace religious guidelines. They are still in effect. The Constitution does not require school officials to deliberate religious observances. We're not courageous to people or against others. We're just tired of being suppressed by small groups. Challenges from ACLU and others must be taken care of. The Bible is not just a book, it's the living word of God. You've awakened sleeping giants? Let's not go to sleep. The word of God is a word about neutrality. The Lord said it himself. I would rather you be hot or cold and not neutral. It's not the word.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am H.D. Scoggins, pastor of the Greens Creek Beach Presbyterian Church. But I'm not here speaking for the church. I'm speaking on my own. I want to thank you all for what you do. Although, I must, I'm ashamed to admit that, although I have two grown children, it's the first time I've ever been to a Board of Education meeting. And it certainly gives new term, new meaning, the Board of Education, to be known in here. Many of our ancestors came to this country to find freedom, freedom from oppression, freedom from religion. Our Declaration of Independence and our Constitution laid out what freedom is, how important it is, and how it is to be retained. And at its heart, it's freedom from tyranny, the tyranny of oppression by a king, by a landed few, by any minority that seeks to enforce his will on the majority. That is what brings us here tonight, the tyranny of a few seeking to impose his will on the majority. This is about standing up the tyranny, the tyranny of a few who want to determine what the majority shall be allowed to do, perhaps even think. This is not what the freedom of this country is all about. Freedom is about protecting the rights of all, but it is not about abrogating the rights of the majority, duplicated by too pretty few. It is to escape the domination. It was to escape the domination of the few over the many that helped found this country and that must stand as a bulwark of freedom today and for all time, if we are to be a truly free country. For two generations, we have sought, a few have sought to remove God from our schools, government, yes, even from our lives. The word Christmas has become an anathema. Easter break is now spring break, as if we must ignore powerful realities for most of America. And what, in what time, in that time, have we seen our school systems thriving? Our nation growing stronger and more able to cope with an increasingly dangerous world? The education of our children growing to help them meet the changes of an uncertain millennium? I think most of us would say no. But instead, we have, have we not seen the diminution of society, our nation's youth, falling behind compared to the rest of the industrialized nations? All because we have sought to be politically correct and instead become morally bankrupt and adrift in dangerous waters with no guide in direction. We've all heard that it takes a village to raise a child. Ladies and gentlemen, what kind of village are we seeking to build here tonight? One that strives to be truly inclusive by allowing the will of the majority to hold sway? Or one that simply seeks to surrender to a dissatisfied few, whose feelings of disenfranchisement come not from what might be allowed, but from sources that are beyond our knowing, but have certainly led to a breakdown in community and a lack of trust and harmony? Let us be careful in our desire to preserve freedom, that freedom is not the main casualty, that unity is not confused with uniformity, that it is not guided by where we stand, but founded on a nihilism that encourages our children and our village to stand quaking in fear that we might a few a few while saluting the many. Thank you.
Ms. Malone? Excuse me just one second. I think we're going to take a five-minute break real quick. I apologize. Nine o'clock, we'll start back. Folks, I would just like to clarify for you folks that haven't been to one of our meetings in a while. Generally, on our policies, we have a first reading of the policy. And then the next month, we actually vote on those policies. Tonight is the first reading of our religious policy. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
That means we got to come back next month.
Absolutely. Please come back. And just so you know, we changed the clock. We're going to start going up for three minutes, counting down from three minutes now. I don't want to confuse anybody. Still get three minutes. Your name, sir?
I'm Charles Blackburn.
Blackburn?
Yes. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking time to hear my comments this evening. As practicing attorney, a litigator, a Christian, and a board school board, I want to make some comments and prove the next three minutes that the principal did nothing wrong. Everything I say is, just to be discreet, my opinion is not legal advice. In 1970, the United States Supreme Court decided was governed case law with regard to the facts at hand in the case of Lemon versus Curtis. The holding in that case states that governmental action violates the Establishment Clause, unless the action has a secular legislative purpose. This principle of primary effect must neither advance nor inhibit religion. It must not foster an excessive detanglement of religion in some, and as part of the reason it exists in our community. A school may allow all third parties to distribute religious material, or it may allow no parties. Additionally, the school may prevent school officials and employees from over religious expression, but it may not prevent student-initiated religious expression, regardless of religion, unless such expression is disruptive to the educational process or obscene. And this is according to the reasonable person standard, not the occasional individually offended. Current legal standard does not permit the school to inhibit religious expression just because a particular individual might be offended. But that brings us to another issue. Another matter regards the United States copyright laws. Now, the Bible is not copyrighted. But the Giddians do have sole distribution rights to the actual Bibles in their possession. Mr. Velli, however, to my knowledge, attempted to force the school to distribute the intellectual property of authored works for profit, for which, to my knowledge, she did not possess written permission to distribute from either the authors or the publishers. Thus, the school did not run afoul of the Establishment Clause by letting the Giddians distribute Bibles to the student population, but for the schools that allowed Mr. Velli to distribute her literature would have potentially subjected the school to stiff penalties and litigation costs for violating the United States copyright law. The assertion to the contrary by either Mr. Velli or the ACLU, in my opinion, was either the product of falsehood or ignorance of subtle law of this area. It's also my opinion that the United States Department of Education policy on these matters is fully vetted and has withstood rigorous legal scrutiny. If Bunkham County School Board attempts to craft its own policy, or rather than adopt the federal policy, even though the revised draft policy appears to be facial with constitutional, the school board may subject itself to further and, yes, as of yet, unforeseen little challenges. Thank you.
We have Ginger Stravelli, followed by Jerry Rice, Mona Ellum, and Danielle.
I'm Ginger Stravelli. Contrary to what some of these people have lied and said, I'm not the only parent that was intended. I'm the only one whose courageous I have to stand up to your bullying. I am one of many Jewish, Buddhists, Hindu, atheists, and other minority-religious parents who were offended, yes, and who want our constitutional rights to not have you, your religion, down our children's place. Many of you come up here. Many pastors come up here and read Scripture. This is not a church. Look around you. This is a public school board meeting. And the school that these Bibles were passed out was a public school. If you want Bibles and pastors and Scripture in your schools, send your kids to Christian schools. That's all. Y'all have lost. The law is on my side. Goodbye.
Well, if you get it, it's my church.
Folks, folks, please.
Jerry Rice?
As I said, go.
Folks, please. Jerry, what you going to talk about?
Jesus loves me. I don't know if I say anything else. It might even damage that. But that is, my dad was a pastor for 73 years, raised 19 jewelry, and organized a lot of churches around here and moved one in Weaverville, now Sheva. And he taught us basic of what life is. That is a principle that we live on. And that's a Christian belief. I'm going to remind people in this audience, as well as you board members, of a woman named Madam No Harrow. And her doom was not of something that went unheard of. Her grave was found. Her body was found. It was chopped up, mangled up. And they still don't know the true story of why all that. But I remind you, this woman was put in a position to take prayer out of school. I went to Governor Jim Olds' house when he opened the house, me and my twin brother. We asked him to put prayer back into the school as the governor. He was a good Christian man. And he said he would love to do that. That was his desire. I tell you, as board and policymakers can have a great challenge, but there's one thing about it. Christ had a challenge. He hung on the cross and died for us. He faced that challenge. His disciples faced that challenge. And you're here today to face that challenge. And it behooves each one of us to consider our hearts, our minds, our soul, and who we're dedicated to. Are we dedicated to a man? Are we dedicated to some constitution out here that gives us the religious freedom that we need? What are we founded on? That's the big question. Today is the day that each one of you has got to be so certain as well as me and this audience. I think you've got the power behind you. It ain't the power of a man. It's the power of God. And he's got to hear for you tonight. If you'll take it, you can use it. You've got the support, and you can go farther. If you don't, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mona Ellum, and I live out in Fairview. And I'm actually not here to talk about religion and politics. I was actually here to talk about the AIG program. And unfortunately, the two groups came together. So I listened to everyone. But anyways, I also, I wasn't aware of that there was going to be the Spanish program. And I have to say, you know, I'm going to put a plug in that I would love to see a Spanish immersion program throughout Bunkham County. I wish I could have my daughter that's going into kindergarten going to the Art just for the Spanish immersion program. But as far as AIG program, I know that resources are stretched. I know that the county is doing more with less. And I have to say that I have a son who's in fourth grade at Fairview, and I'm very, very, very happy with the quality of the AIG program. I love our AIG teacher. I think he does a great job. My issue is more with the quantity of AIG. There are lots of studies out there that show, just recent studies, there were a bunch of them in the New York Times in the fall that said that, you know, the brightest kids are kind of being left behind, that they're often in act of thought. And that since they're so bright and that, you know, they score so high on the EOGs that they're fine, when in fact, the kid, the... Last year, I got lots and lots of notes home that, you know, my son is being disruptive. And I would send notes back. He's disruptive because he's bored. He's being disruptive. He's bored. You know, you get the point. And I think that the children who are bored, whether they are, whatever their disciplinary issue, you know, more children are going to be disciplinary problems. I don't think that's good for anyone in the school. I also don't think a brain drain from our public school system is a good thing. I know of many parents who have left Bunkham County schools to go to private schools because they are frustrated that their children are bored. And I think that that will potentially hurt Bunkham County schools overall. And I'm very hopeful about the advisory council. And I hope that they look at things such as differentiation in the classroom and ways to expand the AIG program, perhaps without spending more money. And I do actually want to comment on what everyone else was talking about, just briefly. You know, I consider myself a Christian. And I don't know if the principal did anything wrong or not. I don't think, you know, just kind of intellectually thinking about it. I don't feel like they did. But I will say that the freedom of religion protects all children. And there was the two little kids that came up. You know, they said something along the lines of, "Please don't let a small group of children protect or change our ways." And my point is that I think the Constitution is based on protecting small groups, particularly ones that we're not particularly fond of. And just because a Christian, like I've heard a Christian tell a child, "You're going to hell because you're not Christian." And even if you, just because you may agree with that doesn't mean it's right, that it's right for a child to say that to another child.
Thank you, Susan.
Don Yelton. And by the way, I remember Flat Creek. That tells you how old I am. And I remember, I remember the little lady coming in with the flannel board and putting the little cutouts on there and give us a Bible study, okay? And I think we got along a whole lot better then than we do now. I'm not going to thank you for freedom of speech. I'm not going to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak because I'm going to thank the soldiers that gave their life so that we have freedom of speech and freedom of religion. And those that have lost their limbs and are suffering and living in pain the rest of their life. That's the ones I thank. I plan to use that freedom right now, tonight. Let's look at the facts. Fact, it is like a cancer. Yes, it started when they took prayer out of the schools. Y'all remember that. Seventy-five percent of the people didn't want prayer taken out of schools. But they stayed at home. The preachers didn't address it. The students didn't address it. Nobody addressed it. The preachers didn't address it, the students didn't address it, nobody addressed it, and it's growing, and it's growing, and it's growing, and it's growing. And I saw a large group of citizens turned away from the school board meeting here because they wanted to address that board that you all ran to get that position about personnel problem. They told they couldn't do it. So I want to look at the citizens and thank each and every one of you, because you're the ones that need to be here all the time, not just on this issue. You heard me holler out a while ago, you need to be here next month when they vote? Because guess what, folks? Fact is, we vote. Fact is, that board is elected. Fact is, that board hires that superintendent. If you don't like their decision, you've got action. It's up to you. And those 25 preachers that didn't come tonight better be here next month. And if you're going to bring a crowd with you, you need to call the board and let them know, because by law, they have to have a room big enough for all the citizens that show up, so they could move the meeting to a bigger arena. That's what I'd like to see. That's why for 10 years, I've done a TV show called Citizen Speech. It's been wonderful, Matt, I think, folks, hearing what you've heard. All the different sides, all the different angles. It's an experience that is really tremendous and rewarding, and you got to listen. You got to listen. Freedom of religion, not freedom from. And guess who enforces that? Not the Supreme Court, not this school board. We, the people of the United States of America, have the power if we exercise it and use it. That's why I'm looking at you all and thanking each and every one of you for being here. Give yourselves a round of applause right now.
Ms. Melon?
We are at the end.
All right. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Monroe Gilmore from Black Mountain. I had had two children graduate, and one's still in the Buncombe County Schools. And I'm, I'm pleased also that we're all here. I think there's a misunderstanding of what the role of a state agent is versus the role of a parent, or a minister, or a coach in a red league. This whole idea of separation in church and state ensures that everybody does have the free expression, but when you let a state agent determine that in a favorable way, then you wouldn't be happy if there was a, a mom who was the principal of a school and started having them all pray five times a day. Everybody would be outraged, but it's hard to get out of our shoes to see that that is sometimes what we do, and what some administrators do who don't understand that only by being neutral on religion, as an agent, not in your private life, but as an agent of the state, only by doing that do we all have freedom of religion. And so I wouldn't be afraid of this policy. This policy, and again, as someone said, one of the ministers said, the children, this isn't about the children. They can pray all they want, they can do what they want, they can read the Bible. This is about what the staff and faculty and everyone who works for the school board does in their work. Now, even this morning, President Obama said he uses his Christian faith to help motivate his work, in his work. Hopefully, everybody uses their faith to do that. So I just urge you not to feel that this is an attack on Christianity. It's not. There is a, if you will look at William Shirdi, he is a Baptist minister, Baptist historian, professor at Mercer College. He has written a book, and I've given some to Dr. Baldwin, that says How We Got to Be Where We Are, and it's about Baptists and freedom of religion and separation of church and state. And he bemoans the fact that his own fellow Baptists don't understand that it was Baptists who put that in our Constitution, because they had been so persecuted. So I just urge you not to be afraid of this. It is not going to hurt your children, or this school's.
Thank you, Mr. Yeltsin. Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was on the list? What was your last one?
Reading.
Reading. Ready.
I'll be happy to go after. I'll be real quick. This is, my name's Danny Radcliffe. I'm a product of Irwin High School in the University of Carolina Chapel Hill. And so now that I've made it through all that, I'm still a believer in Jesus Christ, so forgive me. This is a permission slip that came home with my daughter. I have two kids in the school system, and I'm getting old enough to where I actually need glasses, so you'll forgive me on that. I'll be okay, I think I'll be okay. Festivals of Light. Dear parents, on December 16th, 19th, and 20th, we will be, we will have the Center for Diversity Education present the Festival of Light for the sixth grade. Our students will have the opportunity to learn about the holiday customs of Las Posadas, Hanukkah, and Inti Ramiya in Peru. The presentation will include artifacts, stories, and food from each culture. This is a great learning opportunity for your young one that supports the North Carolina Standard Course of Study for Sixth Grade. In order to keep the program running, please send $225 by Friday, December 9th to cover the costs of supplies. Thank you. I found that part probably the funniest. My reaction to that was to go to the source of all information, and that might be Wikipedia for a lot of us, and that was to look up these different holiday customs. Las Posadas replicates the, it's a practice in Mexico, and represents, replicates the idea of Jesus, of Joseph and Mary going to different houses and getting treats for Christmas. Hanukkah, of course, the Jewish holiday in the same timeframe as Christmas. Las Posada, or Inti Ramiya in Peru references a sun god and a sacrifice to a sun god. And I guess what I'm saying is, you have religion in schools, whether you realize it or not, and equal access, whether it's calling a Christmas tree a Christmas tree, or a Christmas holiday a Christmas holiday, is just what all that I think anybody's asking for. The ones of us who are, who some might call arrogant enough to know, know how the story ends, and we're okay with that. I took my daughter, based on what we've taught her, and I explained those three customs, and she was okay with it. I'm okay with it, because at the end of the day, I know how the story ends, and she does too. So I want you to keep religion in schools. Let it come on in. I don't care the reference to the Muslim coming in and doing that, bring it on, because I know how it is, and I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Radcliffe. Ms. Reedy, I apologize.
Hi, I'm Deana Reedy, I'm from Fairview, and I also am not here to talk about religion and others. I'm here to talk about not just AIG, but kind of our structuring in our schools that goes along with that. Right now, what we have is AIG, which starts and ends up in third grade, but part of that is problem solvers, and it's one day a week, it's not always the same kids again, and there's no real differentiation in the classroom for the kids that are ahead. And they essentially, when they start kindergarten, they're on a spectrum, and some kids don't know to learn, some kids can read fluently. And the kids that can read fluently are kind of shifted around in these different classes, and they're not clustered together in one class, but they really can't learn from each other, and they're held back and are never allowed to reach their potential. So as is where we use the current advisory council for AIG. Do you also consider the grouping of these kids, doesn't need to be a homogeneous classroom, but we should, if some counterparts are in a class, give them a group of five kids on a level, and don't limit them?